All right, I think we will call our June 1st special board meeting to order. All the board members are present, if you'll please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have about six budget items, so we'll have public comments to address these budget items. Let me just remind you that we welcome comments from the audience about the budget item issues. Comments are limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed. It's inappropriate to address the board about students or individual staff members by naming an open meeting. If you do have concerns about these individuals, they can be addressed to the appropriate supervisors. I think we have one comment from Mr. Greg Tiggis. And this is, this handout is from you.
Yes, sir. My name is Greg Tiggis and this is the first time I've ever had to present something to a board, so I'm gonna go extremely quick. But what I'm gonna discuss is that the copier, first of all, I own the Xerox agency document solutions of Springfield here in Springfield. So we are the local Xerox office. I've been involved with Ozarks Fighting Back, Community Partnership, many boards. I live in Springfield, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm always looking for higher quality and pluses of anything that's gonna benefit kids, school businesses, whatever it might be. The copier industry has been in a deflationary cycle for a couple of years now, about 4% a year. And really, we didn't notice anything about the board meeting until we saw something in the paper. So what I basically did was, we have been in discussion with the purchasing group and they've been very helpful and beneficial as far as giving us information, as far as what the district has and what they're doing. But we were really excited because Xerox has got a strong commitment to the education marketplace. And I know people sit there and go, "Xerox, that's pretty expensive." They're very committed to education. And after going to the website, we pulled some documentation up and with a 24-hour turnaround, basically what I did was took your existing documents that were on the website and we did an analysis on the bottom of the back page. And I understand the whole thing with co-ops. Xerox is in many co-ops and there are very aggressive pricing for education. What I basically did was, on the back page, I put together what the school district would pay currently on the proposed solution with 40 million impressions. And to net it out, Xerox has done in many other districts, 55-page-per-minute machines across the board. And the net would be an additional savings of about 70,000, 75,000 a year less than what is proposed here, which really equates to another teacher. And it could be even a teacher and a half. But what we were looking at it as is that we would like the opportunity to allow an opening so that we could process and put together a formal bid so that the district can decide whether or not they're getting the best value for what they're investing in. And I thank the board for listening, so I was looking for a clock, but is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tiggis. We'll be talking about that in a few minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Action items, 3.01, food service management.
Yes, Mr. Wet.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. This action item that is before you is the item following up. We did an information item at the previous meeting. During that meeting, I did a PowerPoint which went through the pertinent facts that are listed before you. And so I won't take your time to re-go through all of that. I will just mention that, again, under the fiscal note, the administrative fee would be reduced to .03 and the management rate or fee reduced to a flat .03. An increase based on the Consumer Price Index would be added to each annual renewal, if that was the decision. The estimated cost for the 2011-12 school year is $298,081.44. It is part of the budget that you have before you. As mentioned at the last meeting, we anticipate this to be about $150,000 savings for the year over the current and that the recommendation is that the proposal of Airmark Corporation be accepted to provide food management services to the district for a one-year period beginning July 1st, 2011, with the option to exercise four additional one-year renewals extending through June 30, 2016, pending DESI's approval of the contract. The contract is currently, DESI's reviewing that as we speak.
Questions from Mr. Wet. Take a motion? I have a motion from Mrs. Twitty and a second from Mrs. Callen that the proposal of Airmark Corporation be accepted to provide food services for the one-year period beginning July 1st, et cetera, et cetera, pending DESI's approval.
Wait a minute, remember, we got a voting way.
Now we're going to vote.
Whoa.
Where?
Where?
Yes.
Oh.
For the audience, this is the first time.
The first time we're going to vote electronically.
Mine hides my, the box though. Kinda had to be a roll call vote though.
Well, it'll, it'll roll call. It'll, it'll roll call on the screen if we do this correctly.
Just go it one time? Okay.
So.
You get a note.
Who didn't vote?
I didn't vote yet. There it is.
I don't like this. I don't like this at all.
Where's the, there we go.
I voted. Don't be doing the countdown, Kathy, I voted.
So seven yays and zero nays, so, and this is, this performs the function of our roll call vote so the public knows everyone voted.
Could I just have a point of clarification in terms of, doesn't our board policy require a voice vote? So this would, would we?
I think, if you, if you want to do it both ways, do it and then also vote online because then what this will do, everyone will reflect in the manner.
I think it says roll call, but we'll chat.
Yeah.
And then we, we can talk about it and decide if we want to do voice and roll call or.
Do we need to have a voice vote to protect ourselves tonight?
I don't know. I, I was surprised by this, so.
If we have a roll call here, we'll check the policy and make sure we're okay, but. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Luden. 3.02, workers' compensation excess, insurance coverage.
Thank you. Actually, I presented this as an information item at the last board meeting and on that day I had just found out that the carrier had agreed to a coverage at the same rate that we had for this current year. So we're asking that the board sign the contract or authorize a designated, sign a contract authorizing Safety National Casualty Corp. as the carrier for the excess workers' coverage at $107,504 per year.
Questions? Listen for a motion.
Sumoed.
Mrs. Callen, thank you. Mrs. Dr. Frederick, thank you. We may decide we want a voice vote later.
It doesn't say.
I gotta give a vote now, but I just looked, I don't, it doesn't say voice. Doesn't say voice vote.
Well, we'll, we'll try this and see if we think it works for us and we can always revisit it.
The suspense is killing all the audience.
Waiting on you, Mr. Hosmer.
Mr. Hosmer, we're waiting on you, Mr. Hosmer.
I already did, no. Mine doesn't pop, oh, there it is.
There it goes.
Mine doesn't pop up for me. I gotta go find it.
All right.
No, it does, I don't know. I was looking at the actual action item and it didn't pop up.
Okay. Do you have to be on here?
So it passes seven.
You're on the action item. It'll just show up the little red thing down here and you're gonna pop it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chotis. And, and I, I was remiss on the food service agreement in not recognizing Juanita who's here. Thank you for providing the service for us. 3.03, copier agreement.
The district's copier lease is set to expire on June 30th. The district has negotiated pricing for new copiers through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies Cooperative Agreement. Copy Products Inc. will be the local service provider during the contract period. The district will be lease purchasing the copiers at a cost of between $706,000 and $725,000 through financing with Commerce Bank for a 36-month lease. The financing information will be provided, actually, on the next action item. The monthly lease payment under this agreement will be $20,788 with possible changes due to additions or deletions of equipment and options as we request from the sites what their needs are. Copy Products will continue to provide the maintenance at a rate of .00244 per copy, the same rate as the existing contract. A little different this, on this agreement, the district will own the copier equipment at the end of the agreement, whereas in the past we've strictly leased the equipment. The cost of this agreement is included in the 11-12 budget and that we ask the board approve the lease purchase agreement for Conica copiers per the pricing in the AEP-A cooperative agreement.
Questions from Mr. Chotis. Miss Callen.
Could you just tell the board the process in which the agreement was? I, I don't know the right terminology, but it looked like it was negotiated with... Who's, who, who's this negotiate, the, the lease is negotiated through who? Or who are we?
You're right, the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies Cooperative Agreement.
Okay, is that a national organization or?
I, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Pelletier, our purchasing manager.
Hi, yes, it is a national cooperative agency, but they also work through cooperating school districts in St. Louis and that's kinda, they partner together through that.
I guess, going back to what our speaker addressed, could you address, I mean, was an RFP sent out or how, how does this particular thing work?
A cooperative agreement is an already pre-negotiated agreement and it is available to any governmental agency that wants to use it. So there's no, there's no need to, to spend additional time to go through a bidding process. The AEP-A agreement allowed us to negotiate off their pricing based on our volume and that's what we did in this instance. I had a conversation with Greg earlier, I think about 11:30 this morning, and we talked about, he mentioned this spreadsheet and I didn't have that, so I couldn't make a decision on that. And I followed up with an email at 1:00 asking if he would send that to me. I'd be more than happy to review it and this is the first I've, I've heard of that. So whether or not it's accurate, I, I, I don't know at this point.
And there was a, Mr. Chotis said something about this is different than in the past because we'll actually own the equipment.
Yes, usually we, we do a three-year lease and we just walk away and the vendor takes it away. We feel confident with the number of machines we have and some with lower volumes that we'll be able to continue with these for an additional one-year period, which will save the district money. And we also have an online surplus site where we sell things and in the event we do want to get rid of it, we'll be able to realize additional revenue from there as well by selling them on the.
Is there any industry average on, on how long these things do stay in use and are usable by the district or?
I think the school district is unique. We works, the machines in the schools are, I mean, they, three years is pushing it. So some of these machines in the lower volume areas will last longer than three years. But by the time we get through a three-year cycle in the high schools, they'll, they'll have over, you know, two and a half, three million copies on them. They're, they're, they're needing to be replaced.
So generally, I mean, owning that versus walking away from it is not as big a difference as it would be in leasing a car for four years and owning the car?
In, in the past, we just want to have to deal with getting rid of the equipment, which was a big hassle.
Okay.
Now with our online surplus site, we can, we can do that fairly easily and there's additional revenue to be realized there.
I guess I just have a comment and that is that I don't know, obviously this is last minute, but, but the numbers suggest a significant, possibly a significant savings. I wonder if this is something that we can, can be put off and so that we can look into this and, or is it something that has to be voted on tonight?
What would our options be if we decided to not vote on this tonight? Does our current contract end before?
I would have to negotiate an extension with them and then it becomes problematic as when you place the order to get the equipment delivered before the start of school, which you really don't want to have to try to do that as everybody's getting back into the buildings, but if that's what needs to happen, we can.
We have a board meeting.
Do you feel comfortable that this is the best price you can get for the equipment?
I wouldn't say, I'm 100% sure, but I would be shocked if, when I review that spreadsheet, if they're saving $70,000. Historically, we've let this bid out and the bid pricing that we received, Copy Products had the business for the last two agreements, so the past six years. And to be honest with you, nobody has really come close to matching that. And the last time Xerox did submit a bid for this was back in 2005, I believe. Copy Products submitted a bid for $1.1 million and Xerox came in at 2.4. So I don't know what's happened since then and, and I'll be, Xerox is a great product, but like Greg said, it's, it's, it's one of the most expensive products. So I don't see how their price point can, could have changed so much.
Does the Association, the AEP-A, do they then take bids on, on equipment? Is that, is that the way that?
Yes, they, they release a, a solicitation on behalf of all the entities that participate in it.
So if somebody was interested in having their products purchased, that would be where they would go next, to the, to the buying cooperative?
Yes, I mean, that, that is an option. You know, one of the other things that led us to this decision is I've been in contact with the people of the city of Springfield and they are also using kinda Conica equipment. And the AEP-A agreement is set up that in the event that somebody like us negotiates a better deal than what is currently listed with AEP-A, that pricing then has to be extended to anybody throughout the AEP-A network to buy at this reduced price. So not only will we benefit this, but anybody else in the surrounding area that wants to access that agreement on our pricing will be able to do that as well.
Mr. Lee?
Just to make sure I'm clear, so we don't spec out the equipment itself? We're basically bidding out the financing side of it, not picking the copiers?
In this instance, the, the specs were already determined. And AEP-A has a number of different copiers you can select.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there's different brands with different pricing.
Within the co-op, oh, okay.
Yes. Basically what I, it's, this has been a difficult year for purchasing with our audit and everything else going on. And we got hit with a lot of bids here and you can see the food service bid and the Coke Pepsi bid and this bid. And cooperative agreements allow you to spend your resources bidding other things and then not spending the time on this specific one. And, you know, in this instance, we're, we're saving 7% to 10%. We're getting additional equipment with more options off pricing that was already very good. And so, pardon me? And we'll own it too, which will allow us additional flexibility in year four if we choose.
I, I, my question was really, did we spec out what we wanted from a performance standpoint on the equipment?
Yes.
And, okay.
Any other questions? Listen for a motion. Mrs. Callen, Mr. Lee seconded it.
Uh, no, I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
I was gonna raise it. Second.
Mr. Ritter, second. That the board approves the lease purchase agreement for Conica copiers per the pricing in the AEP-A cooperative agreement.
Do we have discussion?
It's an issue. Can we have discussion for a second after?
Oh, I thought we were, sorry.
I mean, did we resolve the issue of timing with respect to looking at this versus, I mean, I, I'm supportive, I just, I just want to mention all the, we dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. I'm, I'm a little concerned about timing because we're, our next meeting's the 28th and this expires the 30th, so I'm, that concerns me. I just want to make sure we answered that question of that's, you know, is that, sounds like it may be a problem. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with that. Is that?
I just want to make sure the copiers would be in the buildings when school starts.
Exactly, exactly.
That's gonna create a huge issue with, so if we gotta wait till the 28th and they're not gonna be there and then they gotta put them in, that's when.
I guess, and I didn't get a solid answer on whether or not this can be looked at to determine whether or not, if in fact, we would be saving $70,000.
I think it would seem like our option would be, if, if we want to look at it, to vote this down.
Well, that may be the case. I, that's why I want to have this discussion because if in fact, you know, we have turned down bids of local contractors because their bid was $50,000 more than an out-of-state contractor on a $10 million bid because statutory, we take the position, we've got to take the lowest responsible bidder. If in fact, this is $80,000 less than whatever we've negotiated, then I think we're kinda turning that precedent on its head. I can understand if there's somebody telling us, "Hey, you don't vote on it now. We're not gonna have copiers in the classrooms." That's, but I didn't hear that from the discussion. I heard, yeah, it's gonna cause some headaches and I don't think these numbers are gonna stack up. They may not stack up. But I don't think we as a board want to, without knowing that we can't, we've got to do this tonight, I don't know why it wouldn't be, wouldn't be looked at because it wasn't the, the regular bid process where we do out and go out for an RFP or and come back and we get the lowest bid. This is a situation where we're negotiating with a conglomerate and may not have gotten the lowest bid. So.
Well, I'm concerned about process here because if Mr. Pelletier, I mean, he asked for this information to be sent to him earlier today and it wasn't. And I don't, I mean, as a board member, I, I believe we give a lot of this, these daily operational decisions to our staff and to, you know, our administrators. And I feel like if this had gone to the appropriate person within our organization at the appropriate time, he would be able to be standing there now and able to give us some better information. I don't like being handed this information at the board table before our staff even has a chance to respond. So, you know, I guess I feel process here, it sounds like due diligence was done. You know, we followed, we followed our procedure and, you know, if, if delaying this could risk having essential equipment in our buildings when it needs to be, you know, I, I just don't think that's very prudent of us.
But this is not a situation where there was a bid, so I want to make sure that we understand that. I think we do. Potentially what we're doing is, is spending $80,000 per year more than we need to. Maybe not.
We don't know that. We don't know that.
We don't know that, but that's, that's kinda what we're, what we're hearing.
Well, it's also a different, it's also a different product in the end that I'm sure at the time of whatever lease agreements we've had and we've, some machines have had the heck used out of them, some have had very little use. They've been all turned over at the end of that agreement time. Whereas, you know, what will be the outcome when we own these machines? And you have some lightly used and you have some that are very heavily used. And then you, you decide which, which ones then you're going to purchase again, perhaps from a co-op. And that, you know, it's new, it's a, it's a new end result than we've ever asked for or gotten. So I think that's also something to, that's kind of compelling and, and interesting from the district's point of view.
We use cooperative agreements for several things throughout the district. We have our office supply contract, our school classroom furniture. We have playground equipment with Playtime. I think our computers are with Wisco, which is another cooperative agreement.
But we think when we use those that we're getting, we think when we use those, we're getting an actual better price than we can get out there in the open market.
Yes, we, we try to evaluate that at the time we, we look at that pricing and we, we compare it to what we've done historically. And, and, and going forward, we, we, we don't just rest on the cooperative being the best pricing. We try to investigate that as well.
So, any new points?
Just another question. So Xerox had an opportunity to have a place in this process?
No, a cooperative agreement works that the, the negotiation and the contract is already available. You just pick who you want to use.
So that's why he's bringing this forward as separate, because he didn't have the opportunity to?
Well, every vendor in Springfield didn't have an opportunity. So, I mean, that's what a cooperative does. It allows the purchasing department to focus on other areas.
Everybody had a chance. I think we've had a motion and a second for 3.03, that the board approves the lease purchase agreement for Conica copiers per the pricing in the AEP-A cooperative agreement. Feel free to vote. Five yays and two nays. Gentlemen, 3.04, copy agreement lease purchase financing. Mr. Chotis.
Okay, so we took the $706,000 to $725,000 from the purchase agreement. We marketed that to 26 different financial institutions requesting bids. We received bids from six lenders, those are attached. And the lowest rate was 2.19%. An optional four-year lease term was offered at 2.34%. The district will own the equipment fully at the end of the lease term. Lease payments will be $20,788 per month for 36 months. There's no prepayment penalty, and we ask that the board accept the proposal of Commerce Bank for the lease purchase financing.
Questions for Mr. Chodas?
Just have one question, on the beverage contract, can you kind of explain to me what the 3,000?
We're taking these out of order, is that right?
Yeah.
We did 305 first, now we're doing 303. We did, it's 31, 32, 3?
Yeah, we did it backwards.
Okay, I was lost you. So we went to 30?
We're on 303 now.
Okay.
We all have different, we must have different numbers. Kind of the old seat of the pants, agenda modification. I've got 3.04.
Yeah, the financing, 3.04, that's what mine is.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 3.04 copy equipment lease purchasing financing.
Mine's is different.
Mine's 305.
Yeah.
Mine's 305.
Sorry.
And mine's 304.
305. Yours is 305.
No, we're on 303 now, according to me. Sorry, okay, here's what we're on. According to the chair.
I'm on 303.
We're on 3.04 copy equipment lease purchasing financing. Which is what it says on, look on the board up there, go by the one on the board. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so this is wrong on our?
Then it's just listed.
It's green.
Okay, now any questions for Mr. Chodas on this one? We got a few bugs to work out. All right, I'd, I'd take a motion. Mrs. Callen and Mr. Renner, that the board accepts the proposal of Commerce Bank for lease purchasing financing, authorizes administration to complete and sign documents required for the transaction. Vote? Have all of us?
Let's knock them up yet.
You may have to close out of your small box if you have the, uh...
Already voted.
Are we in Florida?
Got it? We may just have to decide if we like this system.
Just, just get used to it first.
Okay, we'll get used to it. Thank you, six yays and one nay, so the motion passes. Now on the screen up there, we have 3.05 exclusive beverage contract.
And mine says 3.04.
Okay, Mr. Chodas, lead us on.
Okay, I, I, I just want to tell the board that I, I'm to blame for the change, because we had the, the copier financing before the copier purchase. And I said, wait a minute, that's putting the cart before the horse, so let's flip it around and...
And go through the system.
Okay.
I apologize for that. Our existing beverage contract expires June 30, 2011. An RFP was released on April 8th inviting vendors to submit bids for an exclusive soft drink contract. Proposals were received from Pepsi Americas, Inc., and Ozark's Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company. The financial value of each proposal is attached. The new contract will be for a five-year period. Also, I would like to point out that carbonated product vending machines will be equipped with timers to eliminate access during the school day. The district will receive an upfront cash donation in the amount of $212,500 from Ozark's Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company, plus additional revenue over the five-year term, resulting in more than $350,000 over the five-year contract, uh, as outlined in the attached financial analysis. And we ask that the board accepts the recommendation that the district enter into a five-year exclusive purchasing vending agreement with Ozark's Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company.
Questions? Red or kidding question?
Well, I just need a little understanding on the amount of $380,000 in the middle of the call, or the row on investment, equipment investment. Can you explain that to me?
Um, you said the 381,000?
380,000.
Equipment investment.
Oh, okay.
That is the value they placed on providing equipment in the buildings. And obviously, whoever was the selected vendor was required to place equipment. I didn't use that as a calculation in their final revenue to the district, because there's, there's really no revenue to be generated there. So it was just an information type.
Okay, so that, that is something they're providing to us at a no cost, so you didn't put it in as a benefit?
Correct, yes. Whichever vendor was selected was required to provide all equipment that we would need.
Questions? Is there a motion? Mr. Lee, Mrs. Callen, that, my action item went away here. That the board approve, I'm gonna get to it in a minute. Go ahead, Mrs. Twitty.
That the board accepts the recommendation that the district enter into a five-year exclusive purchasing vending agreement with Ozark's Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company.
We vote, we'll start with Mr. Lee.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And, um, let me thank Sally Hargus, who's with Ozark's Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company for being here and for supporting the district in the way their company has. Good. 3.06, our last action item. Mr. Went.
Uh, this action item that you have before you is for the air conditioning project at Boyd Elementary. The, uh, the project was advertised at the end of April, beginning of May. The, on May 25th, the bids were opened, and, uh, the bid tabulation is attached, Attachment A. The lowest responsible bidder is highlighted in bold and underlined. That was from Mechanical Services in the amount of $1,222. That is, uh, above what we anticipated the project to come in at. We were looking at around $800,000 at an anticipated, um, bid price. Uh, I think there's a number of issues that are playing into, uh, why we're potentially seeing some higher costs at this time. The board will recall, there's been a couple of projects that have come in higher, and we have asked the board to allow us to rebid those projects. In those cases, typically, we look to see if there's something that we can either change in the design, if there was competition, um, what are some of the other factors that we believe there's an opportunity to get the cost back down, as we did with Robertson, and recently with the rejection of Sunshine, and we plan to redo that. Uh, as we look at this Boyd project, though, it didn't meet the same criteria that we have presented in the past, in the fact that, uh, there was competition, uh, on this project, so it wasn't just, uh, one bid for the project. The design of the project, um, the, the engineer was Malone Finkel at Carton Collins, who have done many of our projects. It was a pretty straightforward design that they have used on other facilities, so there were really no surprises to the contractors or questions as to how to do it. The timing for the ability to complete the work, um, the contractors that bid the project, I spoke with, I spoke to two different mechanical contractors, MSI that bid it, who self-performs, and, uh, another mechanical contractor that provided a price out there, which I believe the other two, uh, general contractors used. And in talking with both of them independently, um, they both shared the same information that they felt the project is very doable within the timeframe to get that project, to get the equipment installed, and, and have that main work done during the summer that we, uh, looked at. They really did not factor overtime into their bids as some of the other projects where they think it's gonna carry into the school year, uh, with, with some major portions of the work still to be completed that they would have to do after hours. And so with all of those things in mind, um, there really does not appear to be, uh, any benefit in trying to rebid the project. We don't anticipate seeing those dollars come down because of the fact, the issues that I just mentioned. I think one of the other things that, uh, I do need to mention as well too is, and we will have, if the board, uh, approves the recommendation this evening, we'll still have Sunshine, Phelps, and Teft as the remaining air conditioning projects to be performed next summer. Uh, one of the additional concerns that it's, it's hard to factor in exactly, but we don't know how all the work in Joplin coming up next year will start affecting things. So that's one of the other reasons, uh, for our recommendation this evening is to get Boyd done and get it behind us. As far as the overage with the cost, um, we've built contingencies into the air conditioning projects. Uh, when we put the $50 million, um, bond scenario together, there was overall total dollar projects for each of those. Then what we have done is we take a look at, based on our, because that, excuse me, let me back up. That's a projection looking over what we believe our costs could end up over a several-year period, uh, when we go to a ballot for bond initiative. So as we, uh, when the bond passed, we then take, took a look at those dollars. We, uh, take a look at the projects that we did in the '06. We looked at, um, what percentage of dollar per square foot. You need to be real careful, because every building's a little bit different, so we use a range. Then we, and we look at what we project and believe our, our price should come into at what range. And then based on that, we set our engineering fees, our commissioning fees, and our testing and balance. We then have set aside some dollars for anticipated change orders that would come along with the project. And then we have an overall contingency which makes up the balance of that, and what we saw is the total project budget. So having explained that, um, there's, there's four remaining projects with, uh, Boyd, the, the one before you this evening, Sunshine, Phelps, and Teft. And the remaining contingencies on those projects total just over a million one. And that is after the 1.8 from the previous, uh, bond overspent is already made up from the contingencies of the projects we've already bid. And so, uh, I would entertain any questions. And with that, the recommendation is that the board approves the bid of $1,222 from Mechanical Services for the Boyd Elementary Air Conditioning Project.
Questions for Mr. Went? Mrs. Callen?
Mr. Went and I talked yesterday, I had quite a few questions about this. But could you, um, and, and you addressed the contingency, uh, and that's helpful to know that we're not eating away at all of that for this, to, you know, to meet this particular bid. But, um, one of the things that you talked about is that our bids are, um, involve commissioning, commissioning the projects. Could you talk a little bit about that and how that might be different than maybe other bids that are out there?
Uh, one of the things, as, as we've gone through, and, uh, as we've gone through the '06 and as we've gotten into the '09, we, we started doing a more, um, uh, a, a different level of testing and balancing when you get into the commissioning, where instead of just making sure your air volumes are appropriate and testing and balance, we, they actually, the commissioning process, it goes by piece of equipment, component by component, running it through, um, the different scenarios with the controls to make sure that everything performs as it was designed. Uh, it's a very intensive process, and I believe that's one of the reasons that, uh, we're seeing less people bidding on some of the work that we are doing now, because it is a pretty stringent process. The controls and, uh, the equipment, everything that we do in these designs is, is fairly complicated. And so it, it makes the process of closing a project, uh, drag out farther. And, uh, there's easier work to be done. And so I do believe that does have an effect on us as well. Uh, one other area that, uh, uh, we've worked hard to deal with appropriate levels of standardization in our projects as well, uh, which affects the amount of training our maintenance folks have to have, availability of parts and those types of things. But as you narrow that, that can affect, um, how many different suppliers get involved in that competition. And, and we have an engineer, uh, locally that does not bid our work, because they want to have a minimum of three different suppliers available for everything, just so that they feel that they can be competitive. So there's a lot of different factors that play in.
So really, um, we're asking maybe for a higher level of accountability than other projects might. And I think in the end, that really serves our community at, you know, better. And because we're ensuring that these projects are going to do what they said they're going to do, and that's provide, um, quality air, um, for our students. I guess the other, um, question I was gonna ask, and it sounds like we're talking about designing on the front end, something that we know that we have the capacity to maintain and, um, service with our personnel on the, on the other end.
Correct.
So there's a sta, there, you're saying there's a standardization, um, in, in our projects that maybe eliminates some flexibility in, in bidding, or?
Well, in the area of, um, in the area of, of controls and equipment particularly, because there's, there's suppliers, and, um, uh, we, we've used multiple different manufacturers. We, we do keep in mind serviceability and support in those areas as well. And so a, as, as we've gotten into it, we've narrowed down to where, um, where our, uh, people have had training on equipment, where we've had, uh, good success with equipment that's, uh, operating well, and, and our people do know how to repair it and can get the parts when they need them.
Motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mrs. Twitty? That the board accepts the bid of $1,222,000 for Mechanical Services, Inc., for the Boyd Elementary Air Conditioning Project. There it is.
I don't have it. I don't have it.
If you'd like to vote verbally, you may.
I'm gonna make you wait.
He needs his four-year-old to go over to him.
Aye. I still can't, oh, here we go, here we go. I'll vote both ways.
There, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Uh, I don't think we have any other comments from the public, um, plus deltas. Uh, I need, we do need an executive session tonight. The board will conduct an executive session following the meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters as provided in Section 610-021, 1.3 and 13 RSMO. And I would take a motion to that effect. We'll just vote verbally on this, all right?
Aye.
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 As we're in transition to July 26th, states a problem for us as well.